Okay, it's six thirty. I'm called to order the July twenty first meeting of Cherry Hills Village City Council. First of all, roll call of members, Laura.
Councilor Safavias absent. Councilor Wiel.
Glad to be here.
Councilor Brown.
Present.
Councilor Gallagher. Councilor Sheldon.
Here.
Councilor Blum.
Here.
All right, if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, we have a very special night tonight because our city manager is retiring on effective August first, and we have two presentations that I'm aware of. One is from staff, and then council is going to have one. So staff, Jay, if you'd like to start off, please.
All right. Good evening, everyone. It's an honor and a privilege for me to be here tonight to bid Jim a fond farewell. It is a bittersweet goodbye, as Jim has been an amazing leader for this organization and community. Jim's expertise and ability to motivate has enabled the city to complete an unprecedented number of projects and improvements that would have sounded outlandish just a few short years ago. I'm sure we can all recognize, respect, and appreciate the valuable contributions he has made to the organization and the community. Jim's impact on the organization goes far beyond the tangible. Working alongside Jim has been enjoyable and educational experience for all of us. However, his time here, we were not able to break Jim of some of his old habits. We all just had to learn to adapt and interpret. For example, Jim would often say Caltrans. We knew he was talking about CDOT, so we just let it go. He would often say Edison Light and Power. We knew it was XL, so we had to figure that one out right away. You've also may have noticed Jim's coffee cup when you've been around the office that says WWMD. What would Malibu do? That came from one of his favorite phrases. You know what we would do in Malibu? So if each of us had a nickel for every time we heard that, we'd be retiring tonight, too. But seriously, I can honestly say that Jim made us a stronger and improved organization during his time here. He has made a lasting and positive impact to this community and should be proud of all of his accomplishments. It gives me great pleasure to congratulate Jim on his stellar career, of which only a small portion was spent here working for the great people of Cherry Hills Village. We wish him relaxing and rewarding in retirement. The skills, knowledge, and other positive qualities that Jim has instilled in us through his encouragement have helped shaped each of us. Has helped shape each of us as we have had the privilege of working with and for him. I would like to express our sincerest gratitude to Jim for his incredible contributions, not only to the organization and the community, but to each staff member individually. Thank you, Jim. If you want to come on over, Jim tried very, very hard to figure out what to do with the bricks from the old city hall, so we have got one of those for him tonight.
He's not getting out of here without a brick.
Oh, that's awesome. Cut just right. I feel very privileged. First brick that was given away, so thank you.
I lobbied for it to be those vertical blinds, but it didn't go.
All right, next we have.
Michelle.
So I can't top what Jay just did, but because the police department turns out sometimes to be a motivator of many headaches, I thought it was good that we might have distinguished ourselves from the overall speech. So the way I want to start this, trying to think on my feet because I'm not nearly as prepared as Jay, is I'd just like to start off with the word relationships. And how many relationships did it take for Jim to get here to our village? Well, I suppose you can go to his family, which probably is much of his success, and I'm sure that we could talk about that. You could probably go back to college. We probably don't want to go back too much farther. I would hope the statute of limitations is taking care of most of these things, but nonetheless, he ends up here, and it was obviously meant to be. I know the city as a whole has benefited, as Jay has said so eloquently, but I wanted to focus a minute on the police department because he was the right person at the right time for us. We're not always the easiest group to understand. At times, for many different reasons, I suppose we could get into a lot of those, but the bottom line is that it's a positive relationship with this city manager with regard to your police department. We're very, very proud of that. Other bosses sometimes give orders. You allowed us to discuss a solid direction. Other bosses give targets. You understood and supported our mission and vision. Other bosses lead by authority, and you had the ability to always lead us by respect. On a personal note, you allowed me to be a chief who could be honest, candid at times when I probably shouldn't have been, vulnerable, and even a pain in the side. Many times bosses teach their subordinates how to be more efficient. You gave me something much more and much more important. You assisted me and helped me be happy at work. I'm grateful and bid you farewell, and I, we, as a police department, will miss you. We wish you all the best. Thank you very much.
Staff, okay? Counsel? Counsel next? Okay, we have, I think we want, we probably moved down here. We have a presentation for city manager, and I'd like to read a few words, too. We have counsel come down.
Okay, I'd just like to say, if you were, first of all, it's been a tremendous work with behind the scenes. You really did a great job. But I wanted to read a letter from Mayor Earl about Jim's charity work. He wrote to us, and he said, "I have known and worked for every Cherry Hill Village city manager since this position was created by the council almost forty years ago. In fact, I was a member of that council and helped scope what was then a fairly revolutionary new concept for our city. Since then, we have had some fine city managers. In my book, however, and I can say this with some authority, Jim wins the best ever of all of them. The proof is in the pudding. We are much better shape for having you here. His expertise, management skill, and engaging character have served us well, and he came to us at a time when we were in people in need of those qualities in the city manager. He now leaves us in much better shape than when you arrived. And that is, that is the ultimate test, is you can play us better than when you arrived and you did, so we are very lucky to have you during construction of City Hall, during John D. Public Works. I got, it was the, really a busy time for the city, and really owe you, all of our gratitude for seeing those projects through the theater so well. It's really, our city is in much better place." So we have a few things we'd like to give you. We'll start with one. Pick one. Service, small thing first, a little, uh, with us, signed by all of us.
Thank you.
Appreciation. And then we have a proclamation of Jim Forsen Day, standing day since July twenty first, twenty twenty. That's Jim Forsen's day, Jim Forsen Day. And Jim has served with us in thirty-five years of local government, starting from Colorado, the state of California, the state of Colorado. It's a great, great choice to come down with. And he's now retired. In fact, it's July thirty first, so that's coming up. We have a couple more weeks for this. And this list of your accomplishments, which are almost too long to mention, but all of it, everything that you've done there, including all of it, the traffic signal in Quinmore, of course, and Ellen Hutto, live streaming meetings, this whole city hall, really, the accomplishments are, you know, are amazing. So thank you very much. This is signed by all the city council members, so it's, um, today, so thank you, Jim. And now the council is back together with a couple of pictures. If you wanted to give you some pictures behind every wall. So we chose the, this first one is one of cherry hills village. It was seen by Tom Bart, New Bay resident of our community. He also does a lot of pictures on our website, so he's a great photographer. This one we liked, but it shows, um, shows the mountains and also Cherry Hill Village, the horses, and the old Cherry Hills and a little bit of a new Old Cherry Hill Village. So I think it captures the essence of the city, so I really enjoyed that. I hope you, if you see, we can all sign it on the back.
Thank you. That is great. That's a beautiful picture, and I know Tom, so thanks, Tom, for this.
Tom was delighted that we would have that. He contributed. And then the other one, of this, which is probably the ace de resistance of the picture of City Hall and Joe's major accomplishment here during his tenure. So we thought that would be appropriate for you to hang it, and we've all signed it, and you can remember us. And he also knows where to tell his visits. Any other words?
Absolutely.
Ready to go?
I, or you want to say something?
Jim, it has been an absolute pleasure, and it's been great watching the city develop under your leadership.
Well, I won't get a chance to tell the story again, so this will be my last time to brag that in the process of hiring a new city manager, and Earl can attest and might too, that I said if I had to hire somebody based on paper alone, it'd be this guy. And then he walked in the door for the interview, and that, it was a done deal. We were absolutely sold. It's a little bittersweet, having been there at the beginning and being here at the end as well, but I agree, the city is such in your debt for all that you've done for us and tremendous service. And personally, just wanted to express what a pleasure it's been to get to know you and work with you. Learned a lot from you in this process and did learn a lot about what Malibu would do. But also some things that we don't want to reiterate here. You had some crazy council people. I'm sure you've had your share here. So I just wanted to say, you know, thank you, thank you. And as I wrote on one of those pictures, my mom always said, "You can be strange, but don't be a stranger."
Jim, thank you for everything you've done. I have learned quite a bit. When I came in, you were here for about a year or two when I arrived, and I think you taught me just about everything. Everything that I've learned in the last almost four years, a lot of it I can point back to you. So I really thank you for mentoring me through this council seat that I've had, and I really enjoy our time together. I want to thank your family for providing you to us on a regular basis. It's been, it's been a real pleasure, and you've got a very good man up here, so thank you.
Jim, just thank you for your leadership, friendship, and it's just been a wonderful run. And for Earl and Katie and I, who we saw you from the beginning, you've been everything we could have never expected. And I'm just delighted you have been able to hire and maintain great people, and that we can bring from the ranks new replacement. So hold us here. Thank you.
Jim, everyone, thank you for your pragmatic approach. I made first when I was on planning commission, and these past four years with you, you've really been an education model, and in the process of how to get things done. Most, the best accomplishment was it took eighteen years, but you got the light at gun mouth, so. And we'll miss in tomorrow. I'll find out where you two handicapped and called.
Okay. First of all, engineers really don't give speeches, but you're gonna have to endure. So I prepared a speech, and it's probably a little longer than I wanted, but there's a lot of thank yous in here. And I always forget to introduce my family and my wife, so I want to make sure they stand up. I'm not going to do that again. I've always wanted to. Stand up. My wife, Carmella, they've been married thirty years, come September, so I know I wouldn't be here without you. My two kids, I call them kids, they're really adults, but they're my kids. So Taylor and Haley, and I missed a lot of dinners and a lot of day-to-day events, but they still stuck with me, so I'm gonna stick with them. So thank you, and thank you for being here today. Next, I just want to thank all the city council, past and current. You know, it's hard for me to believe I've had twelve council members in just four short years. The original council that hired me, Ward Crispin, Earl Holland, Lassina Vandewer, Mark Griffin, Alex Frown, then, of course, Mike Gallagher and Katie. A big thank, thank you to each of you. I know you put a lot of trust in me, and hopefully I didn't let you down, so I think things have worked out pretty well. And then I've got a council that inherited me, whether they liked it or not, that's what they get. And that's Dan and Randy and Alan in Mayor Stewart. So again, thank you for providing steady leadership to the city. It's always said you can get more done than no one worries about who gets credit. Yeah, I think that's been the case with all the council members. We worked well together, and we got a lot done. Council often has to make difficult and bold decisions that don't always go well with your neighbors or your friends or your residents here in the city. And probably at some point in time on the council, you've made everybody mad at the entire city, so, but my hat goes off to you. You've all risen to the challenges of being a council member, and I commend you for your dedication to the city. So thank you. When you work in local government, you heard a lot of things about me, me, me tonight, but really, nothing gets done unless there's a we attitude and a team approach. And the we here is the amazing staff. You know, when I came here, I didn't know what I had, but I know now what I have, and it really is amazing. They do more with less than any other staff I've been around. They do it with pride, professionalism, and really a profound love for this town. Our residents are lucky to have them, and I know the council is very grateful. And I kind of want to go through each department real quick. You guys may want to take a seat. You know, this is my last meeting, so I've got a mic in, and you're in trouble. So I first want to talk about our fantastic police department, which is led by none other than Chief Tobria. Chief Tobria, she's the finest police chief I've come across in thirty-six years of government. I've met many police chiefs over the years, county shares, but Chief Tobria, she outshines them all. In the four years I've been here, I've not received a single complaint regarding unjust or unfair treatment of anyone. What I have seen are the many thankful emails, letters that come in stating how professional the officers are, how they help grandit voters, or how they help someone fight a loss dog or sometimes even a donkey. I've seen many commendations from the public for our officers, and even a few commendations from people that received tickets, believe it or not. And that's really a testimony of the leadership and the integrity of that entire police department. So for those here tonight, I'd like to have a nice round of applause for Chief Tobria and the entire police department. Thank you. Next, we've got a public works department, and I can tell you they're no slouchy, are they. I would tell you about all the day-to-day things they do, which is really a long list, but I think this example illustrates their competency, their skill, their knowledge. But when I got here, we had the big three projects to get accomplished, and I asked Director Goldie, "What's the cost estimate?" And he came back to my office, and he said, $12.9 million. And I said, "Okay." Keep in mind, we had no designs for a city hall. We had a rough plan for a park, and we had no idea where we're gonna put Public Works. But he had a cost estimate. That was good for me. Here we are about a month from completion of all three projects. The final cost of all these projects will be less than one percent away from that $12.9 million. What a credit. He knows what he's doing, and in fact, the entire team knows what they're doing. So for Jay and the entire public works team, let's have a round of applause. I told you, I forgot the mic. So next, I want to talk a little bit about our administration finance department, Ms. Jessica Sager. Jessica is just truly outstanding. It's amazing what she does. There's really, she could do anything in any of the departments. She knows how to do them all. What she really does well, though, is she watches over the people's money, and she does that with great earnest and makes sure that we stay within budget. During her reign, she has now received five government financing awards in a row. Our audits come in hundred percent clean every time. I know there's pressure there. She helped the city receive the highest standards and pores rating that they give out when we are going out for COPs of a triple A, double A plus, which enabled the city to save tens of thousands of dollars on our COP issuance. She does have a great supporting cast, our city clerk, Lord Gillespie. Hi, Lauren. She, I call her Radar O'Reilly, and that kind of shows my age, but Lauren seems to know the answer to the question before I even ask it, so she's truly amazing. We also have several others, including Pam, and Catherine, and Terry, and Ethan. They're all experts at what they do, but they're also absolutely the nicest people you want to meet. I would like to just have another little round of applause for our finance, Ms. Jessica. Although we don't have a, really, a department, Kathy Guggenberger, our city attorney. She makes sure, she keeps us on the right side of the law, and she does yeoman's work in doing so. But I just wanted to say thank you, Kathy, for all your sage advice over the years, and I really appreciate it, both from a legal end, political, and a humanistic standpoint. So thank you. We're getting closer to the end. So finally, we have a community development department that is led by a very talented Chris Kramer. Everyone knows Chris is going to move a few doors down the hall and into my office when I depart. I think city council has made an excellent choice of an individual to help direct this city over the next many years. Chris and I, we have different skill sets, and that's a good thing. I like to build, and he likes to plan. The city is now in the midst of developing a new city master plan, a Quincy Farm master plan, and will be always adjusting the zoning code. plan, and will be always adjusting the zoning codes. So those projects are right in his wheelhouse and I expect he will artfully complete those and many more on his long tenure. He will be successful with his new title and with the great supporting team that he has. And knowing that a city manager has many critical decisions to make in any given day, I offer you a few words of advice from Teddy Roosevelt. In any moment of decision, the best thing you can do is the right thing. The next best thing you can do is the wrong thing. And the worst thing you can do is nothing at all. So take that for what you can. And I would also just like to wish Chris really well on running the city and I know he's gonna do a great job and let's give a round of applause to him. And then finally, I'd like to also thank our residents. We have so many great people who live in this town. They have a passion for keeping this place really special. However, I have two favorite residents, I call them my Hall of Famer residents, and that's Alice and Fred Abrams. They come to almost every council meeting. COVID-19 has closed them down, but if you're watching out there, Fred and Alice, thank you. You've been a great friend, very kind to the staff and to the council, and I appreciate your wisdom over the years. So, thank you. And then for me, you know, I started out my career as a civil engineer, but a civil engineering degree from CSU. I was hired the Monday after I graduated. And I got hired as an engineer tech for a little town called Greedwood Village. You may have heard of it. That started my love affair for local government. I spent the next thirty-six years in local government. I always wanted to be a city engineer and a public works director. And eventually I did become one of those. But at some point in my career, I transferred over to the dark side and became the city manager. And sometimes fate works a little differently than one plans. But I can say as a city manager, I always felt that I could provide even a bigger impact on community and that itself was rewarding for me. So as I say goodbye, the most treasured moments were working side by side with terrific councils, fantastic staff, involved residents, engineers, architects, contractors, and so many people that came through those doors. Those are the moments that I'll remember for the rest of my life. We planned to play some golf, do some traveling when we can, and enjoy some of the family time that I could have, could have had early on, but we're gonna make up for that now. So with that, I'm gonna say God bless and thank you.
I think we want you to stay in some pictures too, right? Let's, if we can get the council could come down here.
Randy, get friendly. Oh, that's the wrong thing to say, right?
Do you want to hook one of the pictures?
Yeah, do you want to hook a picture? Pick one.
I need City Hall.
I'm doing this for you guys, right? Nothing, nothing. I'll send it to you. You know, see, the truth is, I can never tell whose eyes are open because I can't see. So that's why I take lots of them.
Okay, next, I think we have, I know one audience member, I think you signed up, maybe have our audience participation period.
Earl Holland, Three Vista Road. It's kind of a bit of a come-down now. I've got some things I want to say about Mr. Thorson, most of which have been said. I suggested to the mayor, maybe, I did it a little earlier for continuity purposes, but actually, maybe this is better, given my reputation, discontinuity may be better, so. But I will be just brief because I said most of what I wanted to say when Jim announced his retirement several months ago. And actually, thinking about it, staff has said some things, elected members have said some things, so maybe I'll just kind of represent things as a, as a resident. And as we've heard five years ago, you know, we in council started on a very ambitious capital program. And a few of us thought, you know, how are we gonna get this done? And low and behold, we had the opportunity and the luck to hire Jim with extraordinary expertise, which then he brought along with Jay Goldie to basically do, do public works, this great city hall, and you can just see what's happening with Mead Park, which is, which is just incredible. More than just operationally though, Jim was a great steward of our city finances, working with Jessica. It didn't matter whether it was the Gallagher Amendment, whether it's COVID, it just didn't matter. He just always, along with Jessica, figured out a way to leave the city in a better financial position than it was in. And I think that the city is now is in, just in terrific shape. And through the unqualified support of Chief Tovary, I think we can say that we have the finest police force in the area, if not the state. And it's just incredible when you think about what's been accomplished. The mayor said, you know, this is probably his crowning achievement. And to the public, it probably is because it's what they can see. From my perspective though, his most significant contribution was that he restored the working culture within our city hall to one of mutual respect and fairness and empowered what I think is the best city staff in the area to excel and reach their full potentials. And I have no doubt that Chris Kramer is gonna build on that foundation. Sort of just a personal note, I've had the pleasure of working with a lot of wonderful people, as we all have, staff and fellow citizens, but in my volunteer service to our village, one of the most rewarding things for me was getting the chance to work with Jim. I love to work with smart, competent people and he's right at the top. Unfortunately for him, former mayor Crispin and I spent many an hour meeting with Jim and it was just always a pleasure to do so, at least for me. Smart, practical, calm, no matter what the challenge was that was in front of us. I always came away from my meetings with Jim that he's got this. And he always did. And what more can you ask from a city manager than that? So Jim, thanks for all you've done for our city. It's, it's, we, we think we live in the most wonderful place in the world, but it's extraordinary how much more wonderful someone can help make it. I hope the next phase of your life with Carmella is filled with joy and happiness. And hopefully, our little health problem will resolve itself in the not-too-distant future, so you and Carmella can get on with those travel plans that you've been contemplating. But thanks a lot, pal. It's been, it's been a pleasure and thanks for all you've done.
Thank you. Thank you, Earl. Okay, next up on our agenda is reports of boards and...
Is there another person?
No, it was Linda Bear. Reports and commissions, boards and commissions, we have some commission members, but no? Okay. Next, consent agenda, item seven A, approval of minutes, June 16.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
That's adopted, they're approved. All right, item ten, new business, and we get to hear from our city manager regarding caretaker for the farmhouse on Quincy Farm.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This will be my last report, checking in. At the June 16 city council meeting, council discussed the possibility of utilizing a caretaker on the east side of Quincy Farm at the existing farmhouse. The city council directed staff to refer the matter back to the Quincy Farm Committee on June 30th. This item was discussed by the Quincy Farm Committee. They unanimously recommended the city council employ or create a lease agreement to occupy the farmhouse on the east side with a caretaker. The committee believes that a caretaker should perform some light maintenance of the property and occupy the premises. The caretaker would not act as a security guard for the property, but instead be more of the eyes and the ears for the property in hopes to reduce the possibility of having any trespass or vandals or causing damage to the site. Right now, the maintenance on the east side are, are pretty minimal. We would expect if a caretaker is utilized, they would be doing some watering, mowing, weeding, those type of things, but a final list has not been completed. And then what staff is looking for tonight is council input on whether we should go ahead and utilize a caretaker for the farmhouse and give direction to staff on that. And then if supported, provide input on the potential rental agreement in the terms. Other items could include the rental rate, the length of the term, whether we do a six-month lease with a month, a month after that, or something of that nature. Look into city liabilities of having our own tenant out there, any costs associated with the building, improvements of where they would be staying to make sure its rental safety are adhered to. That would include anything from roofing, carpet, electrical, plumbing, those type of things. And then also, look at the duties of the caretaker. So with that, I would like it to open it up to any comments the council may have. I will say that the anticipated rental agreement would stipulate that the renter would not have a quiet use of enjoyment as there's probably going to be several activities going on on that site. And further, it's anticipated the taker would, at least from my perspective, would, we'd rather not have a city employee, but rather a renter and have a lease agreement. So with that, I'm available for questions and any input.
Great, thank you very much. Council Blum, questions?
Well, I believe the city managers identified the issues that would come up with this. There are a lot of questions related to what he has raised. And a couple of things that we really need to address, I mean, do we have additional liability if it's an employee of the city? Or is it gonna be a, somebody's really gonna be a renter? And I've got some questions on that and I think we're getting answers on that. The other thing is, I thought, and I raised this at the last council meeting, that it would be helpful to have some eyes and ears on the premises. The real question I've got, and I don't know the answer to it, and maybe somebody can address it, is the condition of the premises that would allow a tenant to move in there right now. So I don't know what that is and I don't know if Jim, if you got any input on that or somebody else here may have input, but those are my questions.
Sure, let me at least address the, whether they could move in right away. We did a very, very preliminary walkthrough of the farmhouse. I believe there's definitely some things that need to be taken care of for rental safety purposes. The roof on that building is really in bad shape. I don't know how the electrical and plumbing and things work. So we're going to get somebody, the intent is to get somebody out there to take a look and analyze these things prior to our actually putting a rental agreement together and hopefully we can put all that together and come back to council in the near future with all those things identified.
Council Sheldon?
Thanks, Mayor. So I've had the chance to speak with a bunch of neighbors recently about what's going on at Quincy Farm and the desire for this caretaker and other issues. I'm, I'm very much in favor of this caretaker and I think this is a good thing for the city. I think it's the right thing for the gift that we have been given. I do want to make sure that the expenditures that we authorize are within some limits. I want to put a boundary on that. I think that's important. I don't know what that number is. I could suggest it's not to exceed $10,000, not to exceed $40,000. I don't know, but I think it's incumbent upon us to come up with that boundary in order to allow staff to move forward with getting some proposals to put a new roof on or to, to fix the stairs or to re-carpet and paint. I just think at some point, it becomes financially not responsible for us to advance this undertaking if the cost expenditure is too much. So I would like to get that dialogue started amongst us. Again, I don't know what that number is, but I would suggest that we can probably land on some direction for staff on that issue tonight. As far as the, the issue of rent goes, I'm a little torn. There's a part of me that thinks that the right thing to do, and it really depends on how much extracurricular activity this person is willing to provide to the farm. But if the, if this person really turned out to be a gem that we find, and I believe we're gonna go through a, a public process of soliciting and advertising for this person, correct?
Correct.
If we find somebody that's a real gem, and it's gonna be hard to know that until they're in there and it's been working for a while, and so maybe it doesn't work right out of the chute. But I could see a scenario where the, it was, it was a very discounted rent or even a no charge in return for services rendered. But it may be premature for us to advance that today, that concept today, without knowing what the skill set and willingness of that person is. So those are my only couple of things I really want to get the dialogue started on tonight. The rest of it, I will trust that staff will sort through as they're working through the advertising and then eventually coming up with the scope of work and the lease and the, and the terms. But those are a couple of pieces of direction I think we need to provide tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Gallagher?
In general, I think it is important to have eyes and ears on the, on this gift that has been given to us. What concerns me is, I just want to make darn sure that this village is protected from a, and we, this person's not gonna come on as a W-2 employee, come on as a renter. And I just want to make sure that the appropriate insurances are in place and that we really have vetted through if this guy's, guy or gal is going to work, that we protect the city. We just don't want the city at risk if this person gets hurt. And, and if we're saying we want this person to work, we have exposure there. And so we gotta get our hands around that. In, in general, I think it's a good idea.
Council Brown?
You know, I, I also think that there are potentially some advantages to the city to having someone on that property who is taking care of it in return for occupying a structure that, you know, right now is just sitting empty. But I do have, I think I have some fairly significant questions. To Al's point, and when I was first thinking about this, nobody from staff or council had been able to be inside the house yet. But that has happened in the last couple of days. But I do think that we have to understand what the life safety conditions of the house are. It is a much older home, fire egress, asbestos, lead paint, lead pipes. I mean, all of those things could be present. And, and some of them, you know, to your point, Dan, I think there does have to be some threshold. And some of those things are significant enough that if we found that there, I don't know what we would do. So the life safety issues and the, the safety of having a tenant in there is sort of paramount. For me, the second, and it's almost up there with life safety, is that I have to feel personally comfortable that having a caretaker on that property would in no way interfere with the citizens of Cherry Hills Village's ability to use that property in whatever way the Quincy Farm Committee and then, and, you know, thereafter council and the city determine they wanted to do that. And I have some, I have some concerns about that because... because conversations have come up in the past where the fact that people were in those, that tenants were in those houses was reason to not pursue activities that the city wanted to pursue on behalf of the citizens of Cherry Hills Village. And so I don't know how that can get taken care of in any kind of lease agreement. You know, it's touched on with the, we'd assume you wouldn't have quiet enjoyment, but we don't have a master plan from Quincy Farm Committee yet. And I don't know exactly what the vision for that part of the property is. I know, I did look at the minutes from the last Quincy Farm Committee meeting, and only one real item was brought up as it related to the future intended use of that side of the property. So I would be interested in, I guess I was a little disappointed that the committee did not more, discuss in more depth how having a person in that house either would or would not either augment the plans for that side of the property or hinder the plans for that side of the property. So I would actually personally like to see a little more information from the committee on their thoughts about that. The financial aspect, Dan, to your point, I think is important. You know, at some point, we can't invest, you know, $200,000 in a house just to have the yard mode. There'd be a much less expensive way to do that. And then it even goes beyond that. We need to look at the financial implications of how the maintenance gets done in the future. We had very unique lease agreements with the current tenants and former tenant that we inherited those lease agreements. They were part of the deal. And so we didn't negotiate any of those things. But, you know, who pays for the materials to do the repairs? Who, and then who decides whether that cost is approved or not? You know, in the past leases, the tenants really had ultimate responsibility for all of that. But I don't, I can't quite envision a way that, you know, we can tell someone it has to be done to this particular standard, but you have to pay for all of the costs associated with it. I don't know. So there are the financial aspects, both of the repairs that have to be done initially and of the maintenance moving forward. How does that get paid for? And then finally, just the accountability part of the picture. Again, the lease agreement, as they stood before, the tenant had sort of free rein. I don't think, moving forward, that that is something the city should do. I think the city should have some input into if a fence is being repaired, how is it repaired? If the house is being painted, what color is it being painted? You know, all of those things. And so I'm not sure how you lay all of that out and how you determine then the value proposition of, you know, what service is being provided in return for the value being provided to the tenant. So I think there, I think there's, like I said, a great opportunity. And it does sound like there are some people that could be real positive assets for this community. But there are just a lot of little, the devil's always in the details, and there are a lot of little things to work out. I know that there is a sense of urgency in the community to having somebody there on site. I appreciate that. I feel that. But I ultimately feel like it is my responsibility and my, frankly, my duty as a council member to be diligent and methodical and intentional in this process and not rush to any particular conclusion. So I know I've given that information to staff. I would like to see more information about all of those things as we move forward.
Counselor Wheel?
Thank you. Well, I certainly share the sense of urgency because I think we have a, an asset out there that, to some degree, greater or lesser, is at risk. And so I'd like to see you continue the expeditious work that you and Quincy Farms are doing. I think where I would tend to begin is a list of tasks that we expect this person to do. And you have that mentioned in the, in the write-up. But, but I think that's a good point of departure because it sort of says, here's what we want you to do, which will tell us a lot about what kinds of skills we should be looking for and also what kind of rent adjustment we might want to make, greater or lesser. Oh, it's a little, I kind of got stuck on the, it's, the person's not a security guard. There are not a lot of things, but I do think we want to have them be eyes and ears in the community. So I think specifically excluding security guard almost takes them out of that responsibility, perhaps unintentionally. But I think that's, you know, something that we might not want to, we might not want to express. Then there are questions that sort of rolled around in my head about tax consequences. Before we go hire somebody, if we're going to provide a rent adjustment for in-kind services, that may cause income to have to be recorded and taxes to have to be paid and things like that, which you may already know about. I mean, you may already have thought that through with respect to this position, but I think we need to know that before we go out and hire someone just so that we're informing them correctly. And similarly, does that encumber the city with any employment consequences? You know, there's a whole lot of gray areas between employees, temps, contractors, other things. You know, and I don't think that we want to assume a whole lot of liability in this process. So we may want to see if there's anything we have to do to be alert about that and take preventive measures. But I do think it's a very valuable asset. It's under our stewardship, so we shouldn't just let it sit. I think we should go ahead with the, with the caretaker with those comments. Thanks.
Thank you all. I'm trying to join in all those comments. I agree. And I think this is a, I would add, you know, in addition to that, the feeling of, the perception of the neighbors is that they want the caretaker there too. I think it's not, shouldn't be lost in all this. I think that's an important thing to think about. But I do, I do take your points about bringing this up to speed so we have something to do. My one, there's something to, actually a good property that we can actually have a tenant in there. I think we can address a lot of these liability issues. There are legal ones and insurance. And we can write, the tenant's agreement can be written in many different ways to allow, to allow flexibility. Of course, the tenant, original tenant leases were written in such a way that basically it was hands-off. I mean, they were not at all. But we can, we can modify that in any way we wish, so there's a lot of flexibility and we can, we can get that done, I think. It makes, I think it makes a lot of sense to get a tenant in there that will help at a minimal cost to the city. But the major point I wanted to point out too is that we ought, in thinking about Quincy Farms, we ought to all think about donors and gifts to this. So rather than thinking default that we need to pay for this, we ought to be thinking about who's out there willing to contribute. I mean, I know that the last city council meeting, we had one individual who said he was willing to donate an amount that would be much more than I think probably would fix the roof on this property. And I know that there are others out there. So I think for all of us, in thinking about Quincy Farm, of not just about how much we have to spend from our budget, but where we can get those donors, how we can engage those donors, and how we can reach out to those donors to do those, make these major expenditures. That's always been our thinking of the Quincy Farm Visioning Committee. And even when we first got this property, how can we engage and use and help, seek out the help of our citizens to contribute to this and make this a real valuable property? So I would, I would just add that suggestion about when we're thinking about finances, we need to really focus on donors. Because I have had discussions with, with potential donors out there who are willing, who really like this property and are willing to contribute if we ask them and if we, and if we do it right. And, you know, so I think, those are my comments. If it has any more. I know there's a motion prepared by the staff if we want to, yeah.
We have another question. Katie, you'd, you'd mentioned that until we, again, tonight, you mentioned, and I think you mentioned it in maybe our last meeting or a couple of meetings ago, that you're still waiting on seeing the draft master plan. Is that true? Have you not seen the draft master plan? And if so, if you have seen it, when was the last time you saw it?
I have not seen the draft master plan.
Ever?
No. I mean, I guess there was one, no, there was one three years, two years ago?
I mean, I saw it a year ago or so, made a bunch of comments. So I don't, I think we all need to make sure that staff's making sure that we're getting all the documentation and information at the same time.
Well, and I, I mean, let me, well, so I'll add to that. That I try not to delve too far into the draft master plan until the Quincy Farm Committee has presented it to us because a lot of stuff might change in there. And I think, as we experienced at our last meeting, you know, when you start interpreting draft things as final, it can take things out of proportion before it's time. So I have not sought out the master plan either. I don't want, you know, anyone on staff or to assume that that means I could not have seen it. I'm sure that I could have seen it. I am, I am waiting, you know, I'm waiting for the Quincy Farm Committee to come to us and say, we have talked to all the citizens, we have worked, we've worked with a consultant. Here's what we think we should do.
Yes, actually, we have Lucinda, the chairman of the committee. Is that okay for her? Go ahead, Lucinda. We're listening. We can hear you.
Hi. Sorry I couldn't join you this evening. Thank you for having me on Zoom. And thank you for your thoughtful consideration with reference to these issues. We know and have considered, probably not at the granular level that you were considering, but certainly all the issues pertinent to installing a caretaker now rather than later. Conservation easement clearly calls out the availability of a caretaker to be on the property. And so it is only for the untimely passing of Candy Gray that I think we are in this position. And we think it is important to work with our neighbors and our fellow citizens who have taken the time to come forward and express concerns about issues that they see as they are neighbors on the property. And so we want to work with them, be in a collaborative process. And we all understand that there are financial and liability issues associated with this decision. And, you know, there was a question earlier about term and that kind of thing. Our original intent of the caretaker, when this property is fully rolled out to the public, which may be a couple of years down the road still, is that that individual have an educator role. And so we're, right now, just dealing with current issues and what needs to happen as we move forward and continue with that master planning process. The draft master plan in parts is on the city website and is available for viewing. I would encourage all of council to take the time to look at it. It is a draft. We are in process. We have a meeting this morning. We are working through what the east side should look like because prior documents, the Visioning Committee documented the document that was previously sent to the Colorado Open Lands the first year, did not address the east side because we honestly thought we had more time. So we are working as diligently as possible to acknowledge, receive, absorb, and make changes to the plan that has been previously published for comment so that we can reflect the needs of as many citizens within the community as possible. And that process, as you all know, is very difficult and challenging. It takes a lot of conversation. It takes a lot of thought. And so, but right now, the unanimous result was that the, a caretaker we put in place, that will satisfy the terms of the conservation easement. I'm sure this decision has to go to Colorado Open Lands also for approval, but we feel it's the right thing to do right now. Thank you.
So Lucinda, can I ask a couple of questions? The first is, if I remember correctly, the main house can also be used as a caretaker's residence as part of the easement?
I think you are recalling that correctly.
So given the current interpretation of the easement, that we really can't do much of anything with the west side of the property, was any consideration, any discussion in your committee about using the main house as a caretaker residence? And using this house on the east side where we do have more flexibility for other uses?
Well, it's in the draft master plan to consider other uses. It was not considered in the context of this discussion. I think specifically what the conservation easement calls out on the east side is that the city shall not be allowed to rent that property to a tenant that is not associated with the care and upkeep of the property under the conservation easement. So you couldn't just have, you couldn't make renting on that property, so to speak. But that is, that is our interpretation of what the language means. A caretaker and a person who is performing the functions of keeping an eye on the property, helping with maintenance, it fits that definition.
Right. But so in the con, in your, the discussion, there hasn't been any discussion about maybe using another house on the property as a caretaker property since we can't use that house for anything else at this time?
No, you are correct. That, that did not come up in the context. Specifically, the concerns that were raised in the discussion were risk of fire, risk of vandalism, risk of just mischief because of its location right near the High Line Canal, and the desire to preserve especially the historic barn because that is an asset that's called out in the conservation easement as being important to, that is one of the few structures on the property. The other one is the Hopkins House that must be maintained. So we did not consider using the main house as a means to protect the east side of the property. Didn't come up.
Okay. Well, I think that's worth, I think that's worth considering. You know, I think it is close to the other property and I think, but again, like I, that's not what I see my role as a council member, to sit and brainstorm all the possibilities. That has not worked out well in other instances where council has been perceived to be dictating solutions or proposals. So I guess that was, that's kind of where I'm coming from, where I was a little, the conversation from, from the minutes, and I wasn't there, and I know the minutes can't capture everything. I just felt like, I thought there would be more conversation about what your committee's vision for that property was and how this house, having a caretaker there would either, you know, benefit that or not benefit that. And there really wasn't a whole lot of discussion about that at all. It, according to the minutes, it sounds like there was discussion about an ADA bathroom, and that's kind of it. And I, I don't know, but I feel like there's a lot more to it than that. I'm staring at the clock because I feel like you're out in space as if I'm talking to the camera. But, so, you know, that's, I just still have questions. Like I said, ultimately, one of my biggest concerns is that if we put a caretaker in that house and six months from now, the committee is ready to move forward with something, and the city's ready to move forward with something, and we hear the words, but you can't do it because there's somebody living on that property, I think that will be a massive failure on our part. And I am, I am very, very concerned about that. We have, my opinion is that we have property that we can use. If there are security concerns, there's a variety of ways of dealing with them, including potentially having a caretaker live in property that we can't use. So I don't know. I mean, I think there are other ideas to be considered.
Katie, can I, can I comment on some of this? I was just out there last week, and I got a tour of Candy's house. That's what, for those of you who are looking at the screen here, we're talking about the E, the farmhouse in yellow. And I think that it's a much different, even though geographically it is just a number of steps, dozens of steps from the main house back over to the barn and to the historic farmhouse. I think they're, they're different locations, and I think- they're different locations. And I think it would not be, I personally don't see how, if, if the goal is we're trying to allow somebody to be a presence there at night, which I believe, based on the meetings that I've had with some of the folks over the last few weeks, that's really the main goal here, is that it's not so much during the day because there's enough traffic going up and down the High Line, that most of the mischief, if it's going to happen, is going to happen in the dark hours, not in the white hours. If we're talking about stuff happening in the dark hours, I don't think having a caretaker living in the main house on the other side of the canal is going to be effective in deterring crime or mischief from happening on the east side of the canal. I just don't see it happening. I, I understand what you're saying. I don't think that is the solution, though. I just want to make that comment.
Well, I mean, and I, you know, we certainly, there are other ideas for that, too. I appreciate your opinion. I don't necessarily agree with it, but it's certainly.
Sure. I recognize this. Councilor Wheel?
Well, a couple of things. We might be able to consider part of the main house rather than the whole of the main house as a caretaker's residence. And to some degree, we can mitigate the geography with good security systems, motion detectors, things like that, that would alert the person if there were people moving around on the property. The point that, entirely different aspect, I would encourage us to think and to set expectations that the term of this agreement that we have with the prospective caretaker kind of goes out just a little past the resolution of the master plan because I don't want to preempt what Quincy Farms Committee is contemplating with any actions on our part. And they may or may not have that in their plans, but I don't, and, and what they may end up with in their plans may be shaped very differently than the skills that we've acquired in this, in this prospective caretaker. So I'd kind of encourage you to set the expectations with the person there, and then we'll see what the master plan for Quincy Farms is and move on beyond that. And maybe it'll all work out and everybody will have, but you don't know.
Well, and I will say this, just keep in mind, we can be flexible on a lot of these things. You can initially get them into the farmhouse on the east side, and if something changes and we want to relocate them, hopefully we have an agreement that's nimble and allows us some flexibility. So nothing is cut in stone. So just keep that in mind.
Yeah, I think that, I would just add that, too, that we could always have an initial six-month term, then a month-to-month. I mean, until we really decide if that's the right person or what's going on. I mean, I would, I would add just a, a couple of comments to issue. Know that, that the management plan, which has been approved by Colorado Open Lands, actually has the main house as a nature center. So they've approved it as a nature center, not as a caretaker center. That would have to be another conversation with them. But it's possible, that's what the easement says. And also, I would point out that east side actually has, the tenant is still there in the Hopkins House, who can actually watch at night because she, you know, she's right there. You have to come in through Quincy, past her house. So that is taken care of. And I do agree, I do take Council Sheldon's point that the east side is different. And I, and I understand their concerns of the residents surrounding that.
And isn't the, isn't, isn't it anticipated? And Lucinda, can you still hear us?
I can.
Okay, maybe this question's for you, then. Isn't it anticipated that this person, this caretaker, is not, their role is not to be there all day watching over the place? This person may have a job off-site teaching school, or a nurse, or a fireman, or who knows, right? I mean, this person is going to be a full-time job most likely somewhere else, not sitting in this house all day. So we're, we're likely looking at somebody who's there from the dinner hour till the breakfast hour each night, and then away from the farm the rest of the day?
And then weekends, yeah, maybe around.
And then on the weekends. Okay.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, I think it depends entirely once the job is posted, what kind of candidate pool you get. You might have a retiree, you might have, you know, who knows? I think the Quincy Farm Committee, and to address that point in terms of what the vision is for the east side, does include what I would call more active education and recreation, not passive, as we have found to be the case on the west side. We are working through kind of that visioning. You know, one of the challenges we've had with this whole process is, is we got a lot of instruction about what it couldn't be through the conservation easement and through public testimony. We still are trying to gather that information and trying to get some definition on what it can be. And, and really, that's what we want to focus on, is what are the possibilities, what are the opportunities that caretaker we perceive to be in the future? And I'm talking again, after, after the Quincy Farm Committee work is done and a, and a master plan has been delivered to council and hopefully approved by you and by Colorado Open Lands, that that, that individual will be a very important, a pivotal role within this, within this organization, be an educator, be an al-husbandry person, be a gardener, be, be, you know, be the person that is helping guide our education efforts over on that side and our recreation efforts and how people enjoy that property. So we do have, I think, kind of a vision for what we know we need in the future. Again, you know, we, we were faced with a set of circumstances that we needed to act quickly. We got public input, and we feel we acted upon it appropriately. So I would, we didn't, we didn't specify term, we didn't specify length, because we don't know how much longer we're going to be involved in this master planning process, to be perfectly honest. I would, I would advise flexibility, though, in any posting that you might do.
And then, sorry, I have one other question, if I could. You mentioned, Lucinda, you said that you believed, and I'm not exactly, but that somehow this caretaker, if we hired a caretaker, use the house as a caretaker's house, we would need approval from Colorado Open Lands. And I'm wondering why you feel that way, given that that's explicitly allowed in the conservation easement?
Well, I think as a matter of courtesy, we want to stay connected with our stakeholders, and I think it would be appropriate to certainly let them know that this is the plan. It's not been, to my knowledge, addressed with them because we wanted to come to you first.
Okay.
So I think, I think the language in the conservation easement is clear that it must be a caretaker and not simply a tenant.
Right, right. Okay.
All right.
In that, in that location.
Lucinda, thank you. Anything else?
You know, I, this is really, it's sounding like it is sort of an iterative process where we need to get moving forward. We're going to go step by step. We've got a lot of information we've got to gather. But what really is being asked of us is, do we want to kick off this process? And I would say, are we in consideration? Let's get this going. And it's, it's going to take some time, but it makes sense to at least direct staff.
Do you want to make the motion, then?
Sure.
I move to direct sta, city staff to prepare a draft rental agreement for a caretaker to occupy the farmhouse on the east side of Quincy Farm, and to bring back a full report at a future meeting for city council consideration to include identifying any associated costs to ensure the house meets rental safety requirements, additional insurance requirements and costs, maintenance duties of the caretaker, proposed rent associated with the agreement, and the length of terms of the agreement, among other things.
Second.
Can I offer an amendment? I would like to propose that we consider a caretaker to occupy a house on Quincy Farm and not specifically the farmhouse on the east side. I would like to understand what it might look like if the caretaker lived in the main house. Is that more cost-effective because that house doesn't need as much work? Is there systems that can be put in place to monitoring that might address the security concerns that have been raised? I don't know if anyone agrees with me, but I would propose considering either home.
Well, hold on, we have a motion and a second. So the question is, if you'd like to revise your motion to address that or not, or we can go ahead and, and vote on the motion in a second, or, or take up an amendment. I, I take it her amendment would be to simply not to, not to, not to limit this to the house on the east side.
To the east side, that's it. Yeah.
Why don't we quick vote on this amendment and then take up the?
Well, the amendment would need a second, so if nobody hears.
I mean, sorry, the motion and then the amendment.
Well, you know, you have to make the amendment first, and then you vote on the amendment, and then you vote on the motion.
Hold on, we're going to see if the original motion, did you want to amend the original motion to say?
That's fine. I, I move to, just to reward the first sentence, I move to direct city staff to prepare a draft rental agreement for a caretaker to occupy a house on Quincy Farm and bring back a full report.
Okay, I'll take back my original second and now offer a second.
Okay, now we have revised motion and a second. And now is there any further discussion?
Just one point of clarification. I just want to make certain that we're going to get another look at this, then, before this, anything goes into effect, it's going to come back to this council.
Yes. This motion directs council and staff to come back to us with a report.
One question on that motion. Do you address the financial things?
It'll be in that.
Yeah, it says associated costs and everything, so it's in there.
That's good. Katie, I like, I like the.
Wait, wait, are you clear with that, Laura? Is that okay?
I think so.
Okay.
Katie, I like, I want to just say for the record, I like your change. It provides us flexibility. I think it's going to prove up that it's probably not the right solution, but it's worth looking at.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. Then this is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So it passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, that was good discussion. Moving on to Agenda Item 10B, which is Council Bill Five, Series 2020, Amending Section 165120 to adopt the Federal Emergency Management, Revised Flood Insurance Study and Flood Insurance Rate Maps. And I think that the Zoom meeting will end. Is that okay, Lucinda? Has she already gone?
I guess, I'm assuming it's okay, then.
But we're still on the website and YouTube. All right. And this will be presented by Chris.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I must say, doing a presentation that's following up Mr. Thorson's last presentation, and also seeing him in action over the last year, and hearing the praise, effusive praise here tonight, I suddenly feel a little bit like the coach of college out wouldn't. So the item before you tonight is an amendment to the Chapter 16 of the municipal code to update the flood insurance rate map version that we reference in our code. As a little bit of background, the city has participated in the National Flood Insurance Program since 1978. Through that process, we receive a rate which allows our residents to apply for a discount for flood insurance. Over the years, approximately 200 properties within the city have received a benefit of approximately a 15% reduction in that through our rating of seven right now. To continue that process, we have to stay current with the versions of the floodplain maps that we reference in our code. And recently, we were to notice from FEMA that new versions are being adopted for all of Arapahoe County. We do not have any specific floodplain changes within our maps, but we're required to, everyone in Arapahoe County is required to update their version of the floodplain maps by September 4th. Otherwise, we risk being in violation of that process. So the amendment before you tonight changes chapters, sorry, Section 16-5-120, and references the September 4th, 2020 flood insurance rate map. Lots of those maps were included in the package this evening. And so, Planning and zoning commission met on this issue on June 23rd, 2020, and voted unanimously to recommend approval of this amendment. Staff is available for any questions.
All right. Thank you, Chris. Any questions? Councilor Blum?
Only question is, looking at the map, we're talking about everything that's west of the university. Is that correct?
There are three panels, there are many panels within Arapahoe County. There are three that apply to Cherry Hills Village. And so, those three panels are, the dates are being updated.
Got you. Right.
Floodplain boundary changes are affecting other panels in Arapahoe County.
I see. Thank you. No comment.
Council Gallagher.
No comment.
Brown. Council Wheel.
No comment.
No other questions? All right.
I move to approve Council Bill Five, Series 2020, Amending Section 16-5-120 of the municipal code to adopt the Federal Emergency Management Agency's Revised Flood Insurance Study and Flood Insurance Rate Map for Arapahoe County and its incorporated areas on first reading.
Second.
A motion and a second. We'll need a roll call because this is to our ordinances.
Council Wheel?
Yes.
Council Brown?
Yes.
Council Gallagher?
Yes.
Council Sheldon?
Yes.
Council Blum?
Yes.
All right, that passes unanimously. Next, then, is Council, is Agenda Item 10C, which is Council Bill Six, Series 2020, Authorizing a Supplemental Appropriation in the General Fund for Fiscal Year 2020 on First Reading. And Jessica?
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. Before you tonight is Council Bill Six, Series 2020, Authorizing a Supplemental Appropriation in the General Fund in the amount of $616,854. The appropriation is solely for the purpose of accounting for the revenue and expenditures associated with the CARES Act funds that the city is eligible to receive from Arapahoe County. These funds will be provided to the city on a reimbursement basis and may only be spent on expenditures that are directly related to the COVID-19 pandemic. Staff is recommending approval of Council Bill Six, Series 2020. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Okay. Any questions for Jessica?
No questions.
Council Sheldon?
No.
No, thanks.
No questions.
Brown? Wow. That was really good. Look at that.
It was a really clear write.
All right. It's a pleasure of council. Can I have a motion?
Yes, I move to approve Council Bill Six, Series 2020, Authorizing a Supplemental Appropriation in the General Fund for the Fiscal Year 2020 on First Reading.
Second.
A motion and a second. We need a roll call on this as well.
Council Brown?
Yes.
Council Gallagher?
Yes.
Council Sheldon?
Yes.
Council Blum?
Yes.
Council Wheel?
Yes.
That passes unanimously as well. So thank you. That takes care of Agenda Item 10C. We're at 10D, which is Resolution 20, Series 2020, Authorizing Creation of Materials Village CARES Business Assistance Grant Program and the Disbursement of Funds to Assist City Businesses With Costs Incurred Due to COVID-19. Jessica?
As the mayor mentioned, Resolution 20, Series 2020, authorizes the creation of the Cherry Hills Village CARES Business Assistance Grant Program and the dispersment of funds to businesses located within the city of Cherry Hills Village limits that have incurred costs due to the COVID-19 pandemic. The Business Assistance Grant Program is modeled after Arapahoe County's Business Impact Assistance Grant Program. Staff sent the draft version of the city's Business Assistance Grant Program to Arapahoe County and has received approval from their city attorney, subject to city council's approval tonight. The grant program will only reimburse expenses that have not been reimbursed from any other assistance program. It's separated into two separate categories, the business, excuse me, the Business Interruption Grant and the Business Infrastructure Grant. The Business Interruption Grant Funds can be used for expenses like lease payments, utility and payroll expenses, and other necessary supplies that were related directly to the COVID-19 pandemic. The maximum grant award for this category is $20,000. The Business Infrastructure Grant Funds can be used to purchase PPE, the reimbursement of necessary items for the business to open after the shelter-in-place order was lifted, or to adapt to the new guidelines that have been put in place because of the pandemic. The maximum grant award for this category is $20,000, for a total of $40,000 for the business. Home-based businesses are eligible to apply for the grant program, but the total amount the home-based business is eligible to receive is $5,000. Once staff has received, received and reviewed the application and supporting documentation, the application will be forwarded to Arapahoe County for approval, and upon approval from Arapahoe County, staff will disperse the award funds. Staff is recommending approval of Resolution 20, Series 2020, Authorizing the Creation of the Cherry Hills Village CARES Business Assistance Grant Program and the Disbursement of Funds. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions city council may have at this time.
Yes, Jessica, let me ask you a question because I'm somewhat familiar with what they're doing in the city of Centennial. And what they're requiring there is a 50% reduction in your profit before they can apply, before they're eligible. Are we going to monitor that stuff, and do we have a specific? Are we gonna monitor that stuff and do we have a specific layout like they did as exactly where, how they would go through qualifying?
We didn't include that in the, the grant program that we created, we modeled our grant program after Arapahoe County and Arapahoe County didn't have it in theirs. If it's council's wish to put something like that in the guidelines, I can include that. And then we can either bring it back or we can just include it before it goes out to the businesses.
I don't think we need, I think we need to be more flexible, the, the other question I've got is, has anybody contacted you on this program within the city to see if there's gonna, any interest at all in this program?
There was one business that reached out way at the beginning of the pandemic, it was, we were probably a week in to, to ask if the city was going to offer any type of business assistance, at the time we said, we didn't know, we didn't have anything in the budget. Some municipalities keep a business assistance line item in their budget, we do not. So I told them, it might be something that we look at in the future and we would definitely reach out if it was something that we, we will do. And I will touch base with all of the businesses that are registered with us, that we know of and let them know of this program prior to its opening.
So is this something staff would then monitor, you'll get a copy of the financial statement and analyze it, make sure they, so our staff will monitor this program?
Correct, they'll fill out the application and then provide the supporting documentation. I'll review it first before it goes to Arapahoe County, just to make sure that they have everything that the county is requiring. And then we'll, we'll remit it to Arapahoe County, so it won't go to the county until we've reviewed it first.
Okay, thank you.
Jessica, thanks, I'm, I'm sorry if I asking a question that maybe you, you've already addressed or is maybe, maybe I should have found it somewhere in the Arapahoe County grant program itself, the underlying document that we're bootstrapping off of. Is it safe to assume that we have enough funds in the 616,000?
Yes, we have actually, we put in for three pre-approval requests and received two reimbursements. So total, including the pre-approval request for things that we've already ordered, we just haven't paid for yet, we've only used $66,000.
Okay, so we're, and, and so is this 616 net of that 66? So we were at 680 something?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, it's, it's including the 66, so we would.
Okay, so this'll drop down to 540, 530 something, okay.
530.
So is it safe to assume then with, with our limited number of non-home businesses that we could accommodate them on both interruption and infrastructure at 40 apiece times six, what are there, six of them there? If they each asked for one? As well as theoretically all of our home businesses that are registered that could qualify for this, right? I mean, my point is, is that in many of these other jurisdictions, the money ran out well before all the businesses who wanted to seek that financial assistance could get it.
And it is, it's our plan to, if all seven businesses reach out to, or fill out an application, they would get the maximum amount if they can prove the maximum amount. And we would be able to do that with the funds that we have left.
Okay, great. And just curious, the names and the amounts that are given to these recipients, like the PPP loans that were published, will these be published that our businesses and our citizens who work from home, who qualify and receive funds, will that be a published document, you know?
I believe it would have to be subject to.
Subject to core is one thing, I'm just curious if this will be something that will.
It's not going to be something that we, that we publish, or I don't think that we had intended to, to publish it without someone asking for an open record request.
Okay. And then my last question is regarding timing, once this, once, if this were to get approved, we get through, does this require a second reading of this resolution? Is this rolled out fairly quickly then, we're gonna make this available to, to our businesses and they're gonna be applying, and just walk me through real quick kinda generally what that timing looks like?
We are waiting for the second reading of the, the appropriation council bill that, that just passed on first reading tonight, and then we have to wait for the posting period. So it's around, I believe August 24th would be the first date for applications. And then some jurisdictions were leaving it up for a week, some, two weeks, we decided that the, the deadline would be a month, we would give everybody a full month to provide documentation. If the resolution gets passed tonight, I will reach out to the businesses tomorrow and just let them know, all we're waiting on is the, the second reading, the, and the public hearing for the council bill for the appropriation and they can start gathering the documentation that they would need to go ahead and apply.
Great, and so you'll reach out to our seven non-home businesses, will, is there a way to reach out to the home businesses?
We don't have any home businesses registered with the city, we don't require them to get a, get a business license, so they would have to reach out to us.
That answers that, thank you very much, good presentation.
Jessica, help me understand, did I hear you correctly that if one of these businesses took PPP loans, they're precluded from going after some of these funds?
They can, they can request them, they just can't request them for the same things that were requested when they applied for the other loan. So if they have additional expenses that maybe were denied or they didn't make it into the first cutoff, they can use those expenses for our loan, or our grant.
PPP only covered about two months of rent, so you can use.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Sure.
That's around.
Um, no, I, those were kinda all my questions were answered.
Um, I was curious, what happens to a golf shop or a restaurant in a club or a bookstore in a, in a place of worship? Are those counted as businesses or are they under the umbrella of the parent organization?
If they're considered a nonprofit, they are not included in this grant program, if they are a for-profit business, then they can apply. They, they would be able to apply for grant assistance through the program the way that we have it written right now.
Are those for-profit or not-for-profit, do you know? I mean, what, are they just a part of the overall entity and the overall entity is not-for-profit?
Um, I believe churches would be nonprofit, potentially a bookstore could be profit or nonprofit, I think it, it mattered, it depends on how it was constructed.
Okay, well, they'd have to have a business license, so you'd be aware of them.
They, we did put in the guidelines that they have to be in good standing with the state and with the city as well, so they, they would have to be current on a business license and sales tax payments.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Jessica? Okay, well, it's a pleasure of council, I think there's, do you have a motion?
I move to approve resolution 20, series 2020, authorizing the creation of the Cherry Hills CARES business assistant grant program and the dispersment of funds to assist city businesses with costs incurred during, due to COVID-19.
Second.
Have a motion and second, just need a voice vote on this, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There you go, passes unanimously. Finally, I think we have an update then from Laura on planning and zoning commission member terms.
Good evening, members, Mayor Stewart, members of city council. Staff is seeking council's direction tonight on several terms on the planning and zoning commission, which will be expiring in September. Staff has contacted all three members and they all do desire reappointment. Staff has included attendance record in the memo and is just asking if council has any concerns before preparing a resolution for the next agenda.
No, I don't think, have any concerns, although I do think keeping continuity at this time is probably pretty important, because they've been involved in master plan process, so. Any other thoughts from council? Just reappoint these people who wanna be, who wanna serve and do this heavy lift, terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have a just a brief mayor's report to give you, since we didn't have a meeting last, last, the first Tuesday in July. In, in July 10th, the CML executive board had its retreat, the new president of the CML is Bob Leidner. He's an, he, actually it's new, I think he's an attorney for Centennial, Bob is, he's the city attorney for Centennial, right? And maybe some other cities as well, but it's kind of unusual, I think, no, just Centennial? It's kind of unusual to have a city attorney as the, as the president, but it's, it's good, it's actually, he came at a good time, because there's lots of challenges with COVID and everything else, so it's, it's been a timely appointment. I'm also, I've also been appointed to serve on the, on the budget and management committee of, of CML, so I'll be taking that, that role as well. That's the committee that looks, the financial committee and financial and compliance committee of the CML. On the 16th of July, I met with Cherrydale HOA about Quincy Farm, not on the caretaker position as much as on the parking and, and other issues and had a discussion with, with the HOA members about that and others, even non-members, but good discussions and Lucinda Green, the chairman of the committee, joined us as well. And I think that they were, they had a meeting this morning as well, so I think that I heard from all accounts went very well and they're talking about programming and other things, so I, I think that's, that's good news, all good news. I did get a call from Scott Siegfried, the Cherry Creek superintendent about, he was encouraging us to support the mask order because of, you know, there's a time when the tri-county health had instituted this opt-out kinda thing before the governor issued his, and so Scott wanted us to say how important it was to them to have the mask order, because they wanna open the schools and they wanna keep the numbers of cases down as much as possible so that they can, they can have in schools. I, I did ask him about, you know, what does the mask look like with the schools, he said it's gonna be K, you know, K through 12. So he said, you know, how they do it with K students is gonna be interesting, but and he said they're gonna have an option, you know, for people who wanna be, you know, online as well as attend in person, at least that's their thinking now, and I guess that, I understand there's other other metrics and criteria that they're looking at to see what's gonna happen for school, which is gonna be, you know, important for all of us. I haven't heard anything from Kent Denver yet, and if I do, I'll, I'll let you know. I also spoke on, in, in July 16th with a Dr. Dudehite, I think his name is? He's with the Hillcrest sanitation, sewer sanitation district and he's, he's bringing up again, he's on that board, there's also the Cherry Hills Village sanitation. But Hillcrest actually owns a lot of these lines that, that are being used by others. He reached out to say, hey, I, I know that the city is doing this with its own, trying to consolidate its own sewers, how about, you know, we need to take a look at all these other districts to see if we can, he is, his view is towards consolidation of them legally or what, what can be done. So I think we'll, we'll get together some information and meet with him, talk about what the options are. I think it's always been a goal of the city to kinda rationalize and combine those where they make sense. And, and there is a concern, and his concern was, you know, whether there've been maintenance over the years of these, of these different districts, they've been, you know, there's, I guess checkered is probably the word for saying they're, how they've been, how they've been maintained, so there may be, and it kind of redounds on us, because most people don't understand that we don't run, you know, we don't run our sewers. And so, but when the sewers flood and don't work and back up into people's basements, they, they say, why isn't the city, you know, what's the city doing? So I, it, it's not our direct interest, but we certainly wanna help, I think, facilitate the communications and see if we can't help them out to the extent that they can, they need help. And that's it, that's my report, so, other comments, Councilor Blum?
Uh, just a, a question, Dan and I have talked about this and I don't know if anybody has the same problems most of us have with the phone service within the city. Is there anything we can do to incentivize these phone companies to add towers to certain areas? Every time I drive through the city, I'm on the phone, it gets cut off. Is there anything we can do as a city to incentivize these people or should we do it, to allow more cell towers? And we've approved all kinds of ways for them to do this, but nobody's done anything.
Are you sure people aren't just hanging up on you?
Most likely, but in case they're not hanging up, is there anything we can do as a city to help motivate them, to get them to add or, or promote more service within the city? I don't know, and this came up when I was on P and Z, it came up every meeting, and, you know, we're all subject to that.
Yeah, you know, we've had communications with, talks with Verizon, I've had talks with Verizon and then there's the other, other discussions we've had as well of, of getting the maps and we need, we do need to revisit that and understand what areas, we have some changes going in obviously that are gonna be coming to council about moving the, this cell tower and that should, that should help, it could potentially help some areas in the east side, I'm not sure which. Yeah, well, east of university.
West.
West of university.
West of university, yeah, yeah.
West, west of university. I'm directionally challenged, west, towards the mountains, potentially could help in that area, cause I know, I know there are folks over there who have, have talked to me about, they have bad, bad service. And are you, and, and obviously down Quincy and some other areas around have, have service.
Down here, university is always.
There are solutions to those, I mean, you know, and again, a lot of them before COVID, you know, we're all focused on the 5G rollout as well. And, but this is not 5G, we need better service than the major, major cells. For, you know, 5G is nice, but we'd like to have even just a basic cell service first, so, yeah, that's an issue that we, we've, you know, we were in discussions with those, they're gonna give it, they're gonna give us some maps and really it's, it's prodding, I think it's probably squeaky wheel gets the grease, if we can get onto those guys and see if they can work something out.
I'd like to nominate Al to be the grease. Sounds like a good project for you, Al, I think you should take that on.
I will head it up and you can be the vice chair.
Done. Other than saying farewell to dear Jim, I have no further report.
Uh, just a comment to Haley and Taylor, enjoy more time with your dad.
Uh, nothing to report.
Councilor Wheel.
Let's see, Dr. Cog, we have a fairly sizable program called Safer Streets that's coming down the pike. I've chatted with Jim about it, it doesn't look like we have projects that meet the criteria, but it's, you know, multimodal, safety-related as well as in along arterials are the key parameters, and you gotta do it right up and get it scored and see how you rank, so that's, that's in the, in the mix. I wanted to thank Emily for, she choreographed a trip along with the Quincy Farms Committee to CALF, C-A-L-F, farm, it's an acronym for something. But the more important part of it was, much bigger property than Quincy Farms, also much more remote. We don't have, they don't have neighbors crowded, it's about 10 times the area, but also they don't have neighbors in the proximate, you know, boundaries and all of that. They, but it was instructive to kind of see what Quincy Farm could be, albeit much more scaled down. And, and so in that sense, I think it was a great learning experience, at least for me, and, and we've got some good relationships with the lady that runs that that I think she'd be an outstanding resource, and she's somewhat familiar with the Quincy Farm property as well. So I wanted to say thank you for that, arranging that. That's all I have.
All right. Jim, you get the last word.
My last words, well, I'd like to thank, first of all, Earl Holon for eloquent words tonight, very nice of you, and I know you did that at the meeting a few months back, so thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you to the staff for the very nice words again tonight. You're in good hands and, and I'm looking forward to reading all about the great things you're gonna do, so. And thank you to council again, just a tremendous honor to work with all of you and I appreciate it, so. Good night and goodbye.
Good night, Ms. Calabash, wherever you are. Any other comments from the directors? Has been said, all right, all right, city attorney?
I didn't get a chance, oh, I didn't get a chance to speak, but I just wanna echo the sentiments. I just, like, everyone here tonight working with Jim has been a real pleasure. Sorry to see him go, but happy for him, as I already told him, and really looking forward to working more with Mr. Jim.
Okay, thank you, thank you again Jim, and thank, and thanks to your family, thanks for, thanks for sharing him with us and letting us use him for this last few years, we appreciate borrowing him, thanks so much.
Stay for the whole meeting.
All right, is there a motion, motion to adjourn?
Some of them.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we're, we're adjourned, until next time. All right, we're, we're adjourned, until next time.